February fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen, roll call, Mr. Beeter.
Leland.
Here.
Little.
Here.
Maxman.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here.
White.
Here. Have a moment of silence to reflect on our actions of the day and also to remember the seventeen kids that were killed in Florida yesterday. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have the agenda received its proposal or amended?
Some move.
Second.
Moved and seconded any discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Post, motion carried. Budget work session, discussion, possible board action, consideration of all aspects of fiscal year nineteen, Black Hawk County budget. Susan, you're on.
I'm not sure. Tom, I emailed you.
I just got it.
Okay. I also tried to send you pictures on text, so if that's easier.
I got it.
Okay. It'll take a minute for my computer to come up, but I, these are the, some of the different scenarios we discussed. So the yellow highlighted one, that was the last one that was voted on and approved. That is two million for Country View and not using any of the reserves, any debt service reserves. That is total tax askings of forty million, one fifty-six, four sixty-nine, an increase of two million, five twenty-six, five ninety-nine, or six point seven-one percent. The impact on residential would be an increase of eleven dollars and seventy-four cents on a one hundred thousand dollar house. Then going across, there's a scenario using two and a half million, or allocating two and a half million for Country View and using five hundred thousand out of the roads and bridges debt service. That is the same, the same amount of tax askings, but it changes the rates and the impact just slightly. So it's twelve dollars and thirteen cents on a one hundred thousand dollar house. And then the next one, Linda had asked about a, leaving it at two million allocating for Country View, but using five hundred and, five hundred thousand in debt service reserves.
I guess I, you know, I see all the different scenarios that we have, you know, with, even with, you know, taking the phone system out. The two million dollars that was voted on and not using reserve, I think that if we continue to have the Country View facility, next year you're gonna look at a two million dollar increase again for the facility. And I don't think that we're going to be able to reduce our costs down significantly. Next year, I think, for fiscal year twenty, we're certainly gonna have challenges whether the state legislature moves on the rollbacks and put more of that burden back onto county to cover those tax breaks that were given to commercial and industry. So I guess I'm, I can't say I'm comfortable with it, but I prefer going with what we voted on, the two million, no reserves, and moving forward with the phone project.
Thank you, Mr. Maxman. Any other supervisor want to comment?
Yes, I'd ask Susan for that scenario. Just as probably all of you know, since last Thursday and us approving that, this, I've been looking at these numbers long and hard, as I know all, we all have, but looking at what we could do differently. And I know the intention of us to not use any reserves now, was really looking at the fact that we were trying to show a good picture and save or preserve that savings account that we have there. I think looking at it realistically, however, though, the two million dollars and not putting reserves now means we know if nothing changes with Country View now and we still continue to manage it, we will be using reserves most likely, just like we are this year. And we put in a million dollars, or we thought we had a million dollars at least in our reserves we could use this year. We were, I guess, not expecting maybe to put in two, but we found that to be true. So I guess the scenario, I put that in, and Susan, correct me if I'm wrong in any of this too, but the debt service reserves are there just for reduction of debt service. It's the only thing we can use it on. And we have three million dollars, or approximately three-
Two million.
Two million dollars in there. And probably over the next course of a few years, I mean, we need a savings in that account as well to utilize, but we could use that in other years to pay down the debt service. And so because of all the things we have going on this year, I guess I thought, why not utilize it this year and take advantage of that and help reduce the amount of taxes for the taxpayer. When I look at the numbers that Susan gave us yesterday, the scenarios, I guess, you know, I see the different increases and decreases. To me, the taxpayer probably doesn't care so much about the percentages they do, the dollar amount and where that's gonna hit them. And that eleven seventy-four just seems something, I know it's maybe something we have to do in the future, but to do that at this point in time when we have several things on the horizon, I guess, for us going forward, I just thought if we could do something less than the eleven seventy-four. I did want to keep in the phone system, and I know we went back and forth on that, delaying it. We have, I think, talked about it for the last maybe two or three years. And it is, I feel, a critical part of our infrastructure. And just thinking of departments, I guess, if it were to go down, and I know that could be an emergency situation, but if it was that type of emergency situation, we'd have to deal with that, but we'd also have to use our reserves to address that situation. And when I think of the calls that we get on a daily basis, and that being the main infrastructure for us as a county of how people are connected to us, I would hate to see us really jeopardize that when it is something to me that we could plan for and budget for, and maybe not be quite at risk of seeing how the next year goes. So that's why I liked the phone system staying in the budget. To go back to Mr. Maxman's quest, or comment last week, he had made the, said, you know, he liked the two million dollars and no reserves because he put, that put the burden on the supervisors to find other solutions before the next budget cycle. And I guess, for me, that argument would still work true in the two million with the five hundred dollar debt reserves, because we have about eight months before that next budget cycle would occur. And we've had all kinds of discussion in the last year about things we could do to save costs or to look at what we could do differently, and I don't know what the dollar impact would be. You're right, Mr. Maxman, but I think if that makes, puts the burden on the supervisors more to address these things in the next year, so that when we get ready for the next budget cycle, we don't have to raise taxes this four million dollars or more. And Tom, to address Tom's point and where we've been, Tom, I know for the several years we've averaged in that two to three percent increase. I think we felt that was a sustainable and something we were quite proud of. I think the one year was two thousand and sixteen when we had the eleven percent, but I think one percent was our budget and ten percent was really the public safety radio system. So we have stayed in that two to three percent. And I say, all things considered, I guess I'm just thinking the reserves, not jeopardizing those more than we, you know, have to, and using the debt service reserves as a benefit, and that seven dollars might be something the taxpayers can live with and not put the burden on them. When I think of all the people that are on fixed incomes and all of the people that are residential property owners that are in the hundred thousand dollars and less, that it's a significant cost. We're asking them to increase their taxes. And I think even the social security increase, that cost of living increase was twenty-four dollars or something of that size. And this type of thing, I know, does impact those people. I thought of your comments, Chris, as well, with the fifteen dollar minimum wage rates and seeing, liking to see that increase. And I thought, you raise those rates and this type of thing eats right into what those folks can't afford either. So I, like I said, this has been a tough budget, and I guess if I were to vote again on the two million with no reserves, I guess I wouldn't support that, just because I don't wanna see that eleven seventy-four go out unless it really has to.
Susan, where would the, the two million with five hundred thousand in debt services reserves, but adding the phone system in, where do we land?
The, the top three include the phone.
Oh, I'm, okay.
The bottom three scenarios are removing the phone system.
Susan, the proposal that Frank's got on the table now, what's that equate to a percent on tax asking? Is that what Linda said, that she would deal more of the dollar, but percent, dollar, they're the same thing, they don't make no difference. One just looks a little better than the other, but what's that percent for that proposal Frank put out there?
It's a- It's a six point seven-one percent increase in tax askings.
What was it?
Six point seven-one.
Six point seven-one, yeah. And that, last year, I think we had over a five percent.
Correct.
I, I agree with the phone system. I was on a committee on that phone system year, year ago, maybe a year and a half ago. And I think that's a false number that you have there in that phone system. When it's said and done, it's gonna cost a whole lot more money than what you're budgeting. As far as what Linda said, and I agree with her about planning ahead this year and putting it on our shoulders, we've had the same discussion two years ago with Country View. We had the same discussion last budget, and here we are a year later, we didn't do anything. So, you know, to have any hope that this discussion is gonna happen again in the next eight months, I think it's pretty doubtful, to be honest with you. There could have been some things that I think we could have done this year, even though, I'll say again, the departments turned in a very, very good budget. But it was also said that maybe some of the departments are gonna have to suffer due to the fact of what we're gonna have to start paying for Country View. So, you know, the commercial tax is coming one of these days, we do know that. Liberty Services is gonna drop over a million off here, we do know that's coming up. And it's, I, I just think that we could have done more to bring that number down a little bit. And I think in this day and age, do that hundred thousand dollar example, I don't think it's a true number anymore. I'd like to get a count from the Census Office, but I would almost have to guess, majority of them are above that, a hundred thousand. So I think, truly to show it a good example, we should start out at a hundred and fifty thousand and going up. But other than that, I think there's things we could have done this year. And, but it looks like everybody pretty much has got a little different opinion. And I guess that's why we'll vote for it at the budget hearing when we have it on in March.
Tom, to address your question, because I was curious too, of the residential taxpayers or who I was concerned about more than I know the commercial and some of the others, but because we key into that factor, I did ask Rita and Kim about doing a query of the property tax, of the residential taxpayers. And that got the number of the total being fifty-three thousand, two hundred and fifty-two. And of that number, fifty percent have homes that are a hundred, a hundred thousand dollars or less. And we have a breakdown, obviously, of those with houses fifty thousand or less, or ninety-nine, nine hundred and ninety-nine less. And the hundred thousand to one hundred and ninety-nine thousand, there were nineteen thousand in that, so there's thirty-six percent of the taxpayers are in that. So between that, those numbers even, that's eighty-six percent of our population that's in residential taxpayers, that's eighty-
Who got that information for you?
I'd asked Rita, and she had Kim query it for us.
Okay. Did all the board members get that?
I just got it. So, no, I'm just now looking at it. But I was gonna say, to give you that information, I certainly can provide that to everyone. But it was just an answer to your question there when you say that. Median house price today, I think, is about a hundred and thirty in this, a hundred and thirty thousand in Black Hawk County.
But we're looking at assessed evaluation, and that's fifty-five percent of the sellable evaluation.
Mr. Schwartz?
I was gonna say, I'm supportive of the two million for Country View, the five hundred thousand coming out debt services and doing the phone system this year. So that's that third scenario on the top row.
Tom, I would, to ask you a question, I guess, you know, we have talked about a lot of things, and you made the comment the other day, you know, it's been talked about for thirty years. And I think, obviously, it's been talked about, and some things have been tried for thirty years, but I don't think there were things that we talked about this last year that have been tried, or maybe they've been tried and we could do a better job. I don't know if it's our management, do a better job in trying. I don't know if it's man, someone that will have to manage Country View, if it does end up being in our hands, or if it's a new administrator. But I think they take the direction from the board, and if there were some of the things we talked about that we wanted to see and have done, that possibly there could be some things that we could do a better job of, so I guess-
Realistically, if you look around at some of the areas that you could look at at Country View, to be honest with you, I don't see any place that you could cut back that would make a major difference as far as that budget's out there, because most of the budget's in the employment, and you have to have those people there for a twenty-four seven facility. And you might save a few dollars on food services, but I don't think it's gonna be a whole lot. And a lot of other things, too. I, you know, if it was possible, I think over the years I've had, I think, three or four administrators out there since I've been on the board, I think they would have tried some of those things. And they haven't been tried, so I'm doubtful that you could make any changes the way it is right now.
I guess I, I believe that we could make changes, and the way we can make changes is to look at our senses. Certainly, we're ninety-nine percent Medicaid funded. The more individuals that we have in the nursing side of that facility, although they have complex issues, by reducing those, since we only get eighty percent reimbursement from, from the state, I think we could reduce our costs by reducing our census numbers out there.
But, you know, just keep in mind, too, all this discussion we're having is on operating monies and assets. We haven't talked at all about the infrastructure. We do know we got a chiller out there that's gonna be need replacing. And one thing about Country View, if something goes down out there, there's nothing we can talk about, meaning we have to act, because it's a twenty-four seven facility with residents. So we, all the monies we're talking about now is for operating only and for the infrastructure. And that's when you're gonna see your reserves go right down.
Yeah, and I guess that's why I emphasize that we're not just looking at two million for this fiscal year, we're gonna look at that repeat again for fiscal year two thousand and twenty, the need to put in another two million dollars, and that will have to start working on the facility infrastructure. So I guess, you know, we have scenario, Chris has voiced his desire to look at the two million with five hundred out of debt services. I get, if I recall, you were one of the board members that voted for the two million with no reserves, or did-
Yeah, I did.
So you're on prevailing side of that.
So, I guess I'd be happy to recall my vote on that, so we could take another vote on this two, two million with the five hundred thousand in reserves.
Before we go there, you know, we're talking about all this different stuff, and we did make a trip over to Dubuque, and like Mr. Little said, you know, there, with the food service and the different things that Dubuque tried and didn't work. And I don't, I'm not a big fan of outsourcing stuff anyway, because you lose control. We, you know, I see that every day on IT service we're getting with that. So I'm not a big fan of outsourcing anything. And we've got a due diligence, you know, we've got, we've gotta take care of these people. Everywhere I go, people ask me, you know, what are you gonna do about these people? And talked with several people yesterday, and the same thing come up about Country View, you know, that, yeah, it's been around for a while, we, maybe we have kicked the can forward, but we're talking about people that no one else wants to take care of, in all honesty. No one else wants these people because of their, the situations that they have, or the ailments they have. And I'm a big proponent of taking care of these people, doing the best we can, and doing the best we can for the taxpayers. That's what we're here for, to make tough decisions.
Well, one, one of the other reasons that it's difficult for the private sector to provide services for these individuals that are on Medicare is that they simply can't afford to do it because reimbursement rate is coming from the state of Iowa.
But that's not, that, that's not their fault, Frank. That's not these people that-
I understand it's not the residents' fault.
Yeah.
It's our legislature's fault.
Yeah, it's federal and state government.
And you pointed out the other day is that the federal is pushing to reduce Medicare payments.
Right.
And how is that gonna impact us in the future? Maybe, maybe we will get less than eighty percent.
Does it get worse before it gets better?
I don't, I don't see a better side.
But I also think to the point of looking at Dubuque as the example, they didn't, they didn't realize cost savings with their, with their food services, but they did realize cost savings with that own pool of nurses that they have, so they're not relying on the nursing agencies. They realized cost savings by having multiple shift options instead of just the shift options that are more conducive for a twenty-four hour facility, something that our, our outgoing assistant administrator recommended that we look at when we do the contracts again this year. But they also realized savings because they've got some folks doing twelve hour shifts.
Yeah, that's-
And Dubuque is putting approximately three and a half million dollars into that facility every year. Dubuque taxpayers are paying. I guess it comes down, you know, it's, it's, it's not a shared responsibility. It's only two counties in the state of Iowa that are taking on this type of individuals and paying, having our county taxpayers pay this money.
And maybe that's-
You know, the, we're even looking at our twenty-two county regional services not supporting this type of facility. No, that's that possibility.
Right.
So the other ninety-seven counties are not sharing in these costs.
Right, right.
And it's really unfortunate. We're, we're being failed on, on mental health at the federal level, at the state level, and, and, and by others. And it's, but it's, at the end of the day, I mean, we've got, you know, a lot of folks, this is, this is really a mental health facility, and that's, that's why I wanna see it stay in our hands, so we can guarantee that. But I think that the, it's gonna be a rough couple of years, but I think that the, the national and state atmosphere is gonna change, because there's a, a growing critical mass of folks in the state that realize that we have to prioritize and we have to invest in mental health, and that, that investment shouldn't all come from the counties. But we're gonna have to weather some hard years, though, to get them-
I, I agree with you that the consensus is we need to do something, but nobody will put any money towards it.
Right. Agreed, Mr. Maxman.
Well, I think the nursing agencies, we said, was such a large percentage of the budget, that might be an area where we can look at those nursing pools that would make a bit of significant difference.
And, and the, if we did get more RNs, you know, out there, it would help with being able to do more services in-house, so we wouldn't have to ship them out. That, you know, and there's a lot of things that factor in out there, too. We forget about, we've gotta take these people to their appointments. You know, there's travel time involved. I was out there the other day, and a young gentleman, twenty-six years old, is out there with some form of sickle cell anemia. And his appointment was in Iowa City, so one of the residents, or one of the employees, was assigned to take him down there. One of the CNAs apparently took him down for his treatment. And that, that was an all-day job, you know, so it took one person out of the facility to do this. And unfortunately, that, that has to be done with the clientele that we're dealing with. But I wouldn't want them treated any other way, because they are a special sector of our society, and very special. And I, I myself, I think I could, I could live with the two million with five hundred out of debt service, like two of the supervisors have stated, and, and working hard and diligently in the next few months with the new administration that we put in place out at Country View to get things in order. And I will, and not pat myself on the back, it may not even work, but I did go out there and talk to the employees and tell them, they, they've got a buy-in to this, too. You know, they, we've got employees out there that aren't doing due diligence, and I actually had the union reps stand up and clap, because that, they know who they are out there. They know that they're not doing their job, and it's a damn shame that they're costing the county a million dollars if they do their job. That place would be running smooth, and we, we wouldn't be losing the kind of money we are. I mean, that's a small percentage, but it's still a big chunk of money.
Anyone else got anything they'd like to bring or call for the question? Mr. Little?
Yeah, I'm fine.
You're fine? Mr. Maxman, anything else?
No, but to think that this, you know, if, if we maintain ownership of Country View, to think that the amount that we're gonna have to increase taxes for fiscal twenty is gonna be any different than what we have in front of us again today, I think is not being realistic.
No. And I would agree. I just think this will hold us maybe to the fire, or I guess our feet to the fire to try as many things as possible in the next few months as we can. And if we fail, we fail, but we can try.
So, I don't know, Chris, are you making a motion to-
I'd like to, I'm sure with, it's usually how to do it, but I'd like to make the motion that we recall the previous vote, in exchange for this, this two million and the five hundred thousand debt services with the phones.
Plus the phones?
Yeah, with, with the phones.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? I wanna thank everyone for their hard work on this, and reiterate that, like Mr. Little said earlier, the department heads did do us due diligence and do a great job on, on your budgets. And unfortunately, we have a tough job to do up here, but that's what we get paid the big money for. With that, I have a motion and a second.
I, I wanna clarify the motion. Is this a motion to reconsider the motion that was passed before?
Yeah, so we probably need to do this in two actions. So first reconsider, and then vote on the new one.
I don't know, do we need to do that, or just vote on the new?
That would override it, wouldn't it?
Just like-
We're gonna get it right.
Yeah.
Because we did a three million dollar one.
And of course, we don't have a lawyer here.
Those two motions ensure that we get it right?
What I would recommend is that you have a motion to reconsider, and then you would be revoting on the original motion, which then you could vote down, and then have a motion to do the, the, what you actually wanna do today. So, that would be three votes, actually. So, motion to reconsider, that passes, then you actually do the reconsideration. And if that reconsidered motion fails, then you offer another motion that is the final one that you talked about. Does that make sense?
Got me completely confused.
Three, I think, I think we don't really need two.
Okay.
I, I don't know.
That's my recommendation, but you go ahead and do what you want.
Let's go with what Grant said.
It doesn't hurt us to vote three times.
I'll make, I'll make the motion to-
Make sure our eyes and nose is all right.
I'll, I'll make the, the motion to, to reconsider the past vote on the two million dollars and no reserves. And this is just to, just to bring it up for vote again.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? This a roll call vote. Please answer as your name is called.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Maxman?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White? Yes, resolution adopted. Next is?
Next, now we call the vote on, on the motion that we're reconsidering. This is the, so now, so if you want to, if you want to go for the new option, you need to vote no on this, I understand, so.
Work it any way you want, Grant.
You're making a motion to, to rescind the $2 million, no reserves.
He's not making a motion now, he's, we're just voting on the motion that you made before that passed.
Okay.
Because we, we are reconsidering that now.
So, now we just need to call the vote.
Right.
Everyone understand that?
Let's, what do we vote again?
Earlier motion that passed.
Earlier motion that passed, Tom, the $2 million, the one that Frank, $2 million, no reserves.
Yeah.
To rescind that one. Okay?
A vote no rescinds that.
Right.
Okay. Layland?
No.
Little?
No.
Maxman?
No.
Schwartz?
No.
White?
No. Resolution adopted.
I'll make a motion for, that we allocate $2 million for, for Country View, using, utilizing $500,000 in debt services reserves, and including the upgrade to the phone system.
Second.
Moved in second. Discussion. This is a roll call vote, please answer, your name is called.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
No.
Maxman?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Anything else, Susan?
So, I should have asked this before. Are we putting in $2 million plus $500,000 for reserve, from reserves?
We're, we're putting in $2 million for Country View, but then we're using 500 in reserves, so that nets to just a one and a half million.
In the tax asking.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hold on, it's going to be a bumpy eight months. Sorry, we'll get it then.
Just by guarantee, you're going to be using more reserves in fiscal year 19 than-
Yeah, I would think that might be too true, so I guess it's holding our feet to the fire that we use as little as possible. No, I agree, there's going to probably be reserves used.
I like to think the atmosphere out there will change.
And it's contract negotiations, I mean, those discussions open up, too, so I think it's a good time to have the nursing pool discussion and FMLA and lots of things, so.
Anything else come before us? Entertaining motion for adjournment.
So, moved?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you, Tom.
Thanks, Tom.